I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Go ahead and consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
We've got our claims and payroll and other reports in your share drive that everybody can look at. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda and consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Then we'll go ahead and move on to the opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission? Come on up, sir. Just state your name and address and limit it. We usually limit it to about five minutes.
Scott DeWitt, 301 South Cherry Street, Worthing, South Dakota. I am the chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission in Worthing. I just would like to address, I know this is just the hearing to set the date for Article Six, but I would like to encourage you all in the future to be in contact with an official from the city of Worthing as this will impact what is going on. We learned last night that there were seven certified letters gone out to people in the area, none of them in Worthing, no official from Worthing. It'd have been nice to get a heads up. I've looked at your comprehensive plan. Good till 2025. It states in there several times that you will work closely with municipalities, and I just would like to see that come to fruition in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody stepping up or hearing anybody. Any commissioners have any informational reports? Commissioner Aaronz?
Thank you. Myself, Commissioner Schmidt, and Commissioner Gibbon attended the County Commissioner Workshop last week in Pierre for two days. Pretty good opportunity to learn what's going on around the state. We also had the opportunity, I would say the main thrust of the workshop was community and economic development. And the one or two observations I made from the workshop were that communities and counties especially seem to be working together to do economic development projects hand in hand with the state. But I will tell you this, there is a glaring disparity between this part of the state and the rest of the state when it comes to economic development. I think it comes as no surprise to people that the Sioux Falls region, the area, including Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties, is growing rapidly. And we should count our blessings for that, and it creates a lot of economic opportunities for a lot of people and a lot of families that they ordinarily wouldn't have, but it also creates some challenges for government and communities as well. And the Commissioner Workshop presented some opportunities for us to learn how to confront those issues in constructive ways. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't say our treasurer attended and our auditor as well, and some of their deputies. So it was a good opportunity to learn from other counties on what they're doing, and it was good overall.
Thank you. Commissioner Poppins?
I have nothing for this morning. Thank you.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, I'd like to concur with Commissioner Aaronz that it was a learning experience, and I enjoyed the opportunity to attend. I have a couple of things. As you realize, Commissioners Schmidt and I were in charge of getting an appraisal for the transfer station at Worthing. That has been completed, and so I'll be giving that appraisal to our clerk to forward on to our auditor at that particular time. Also, I did attend this past Friday a meeting of the Sioux Valley Railroad Authority. As I spoke to you before previously, this has been going on for quite some time, the possibility of a sale. It has been completed, that rail line between Canton and Beersford and also Haywarden, and this is a formality involving the state of South Dakota. I think this is a good thing. I think that hearing what has gone on in the past on moving forward, I think that we're moving in the right direction there and so on and so forth. The one thing that was a concern, though, for those that, again, I guess, produce and haul grain in that particular area, my district in the southern part of the county, is that State Highway 46 will be under construction from Beersford to the Iowa line coming up, and that means that there will be a lot of grain that will be rerouted to those terminals in those areas, which could cause some stress on our county roads, particularly when you look at Spur Avenue and Lincoln County 152 and some of those others. If a lot of that green does come down those avenues and some other roads in southern Lincoln County the next two years. So I think we'll have to work some with the state and see what their idea is. Obviously, maybe we can get some compensation, maybe we can't. I don't know. So anyway, that's one of the things that they were concerned about down in that area of our county, so.
Thank you. Go ahead and move on to regular business. Item one, Jeff Schaefer? Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Schaefer. I'm with the Department of Flexed and Audit, and we recently completed your fiscal 2019 financial audit. Each review is provided with a schedule of findings we might have had during the audit. You'll find that there's very little on it. We had a few oral comments, but nothing of any significance, even bringing attention to the board, very few adjustments. It was a very smooth, good audit. So it's in its final stages. It's ready to be published, so once this is over, you'll probably get your copies, so.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
Yep. So any questions that anyone might have concerning the audit, or?
Anybody? Doesn't sound like it.
All right. Well, then that's short and sweet, then. Thanks so much.
Item two, we have a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County by changing the zoning of the property legally described as Lot Four of Track One of Superior Edition in the southeast quarter of Section 18, Township 97 North, Range 50 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the C Commercial Zoning District to the I One Light Industrial Zoning District. The location is at 28778 Superior Place in Beersford. Planning Commission recommended approval, five to zero with one abstention. Toby, is he going to come in?
Mm-hmm.
Where's he at?
Right there.
There you are.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As was just mentioned, this is an application to change the zone approximately, whoops, 18 acres from the C Commercial District to the I One Light Industrial District. The applicant is proposing to expand the business, and so this would allow it to be a conforming use. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff.
Anybody have any questions? If not, I'd consider a motion. Well, excuse me, never mind. Does anybody from the public want to speak in favor of the application, including the applicant? You want to go ahead and come on up and state your name and address?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm George Hofer, president and co-owner of Long Creek Steel. And basically, our aim is we need warehousing for us so we can control our market a little better, especially what's going on right now in the market, just basically to protect our customers from ups and downs. We just don't have enough room for raw goods, so we can't protect our customers. We've got projects booked all the way into the summer already, which is a good thing. But at the same time, we can't control our pricing well enough without actually sitting on the actual material. So that's what our aim is. Just more square footage.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions? All right. Anybody else want to speak in favor of the application? Okay. Anybody would like to speak against? Hearing none, seeing none, I'd go ahead and consider a motion.
I'll so moved.
Second.
And is that a motion to approve, the amendment?
Is it a motion to approve, correct?
Correct.
And then that's the same on the second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, motion carries. Toby, you want to go ahead and read it?
Yep.
Thanks.
Sean, you want to read that one?
You bet. This is a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County by changing the zoning of property legally described as Lot Five of Track One of Superior Edition in the southeast quarter of Section 18, Township 97 North, Range 50 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the C Commercial Zoning District to the Iowa, excuse me, I One Light Industrial Zoning District. Location is in northwest corner of the intersection of 288th Street and 471st Avenue, Beersford. Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero with one abstained.
Good morning again. This property is just to the east of the previous item. Again, the applicant is proposing to expand the existing complex. This will go actually across this property line. The proposal is to vacate that parcel or combine those parcels. This would allow, again, the application to proceed with an expansion of that as a conforming use with this change of zone. The Planning Commission did concur with the staff report that this is in conformance with your comprehensive planning or zoning ordinance, and they did recommend approval of this. With that, we'd have to answer any questions you have for staff.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hofer, would you like to speak, would you like to say anything additional?
It's the same thing. We're just combining the two lines.
Okay. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in favor of the application? If not, anybody that would like to speak against the application? Hearing none and seeing none, I'd consider a motion.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item four, second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County amending the text of Article 12, Section 12.09, subsection F, concentrated animal feeding operations, minimum separation distances of the 2009 revised zoning ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota. The Planning Commission recommended approval, five to zero with one abstention.
Good morning again. Before you this morning is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance, specifically Section 1219F. As you can see from the briefing memo, that this has been an ongoing process that the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners has been reviewing. What's before you this morning is up on the screen. What I would call this in general, this is an administrative amendment, and I'll walk through kind of what I mean by that. The first part of this is strictly to just, and we've talked about this, it's been consistent through a lot of the drafts that have been presented to you, is to get consistency with language instead of referencing a minimum separation distance, that we would change that to reference a setback. Setback is what's defined within the zoning ordinance, so it's just being consistent with that, as well as it's being consistent with the setback chart that was always within the ordinance. The second part of that is clarifying the setback measurement, and so right now it just says identifies, from the structure of use, it's identified in the setback. There's always been some confusion as far as if that includes uses, additional uses, and those different types of things. So this proposed change would allow it to be clearly black and white of where that setback is measured from. There was the Planning Commission, you referred an ordinance back to the Planning Commission that would have changed the Class C setback or increased it. The Planning Commission did recommend approval to not change the setback. So this proposed draft, while it looks like there's a lot of additions in the setback chart, there is really no changes to the setbacks that are identified. It's just adding the mile, corresponding mile. The second part of that is that, and this has been consistent through all the drafts that have been recommended by the Planning Commission, that this proposed ordinance would strike the SDFOT requirement. Again, we've talked about this in the past, that the SDFOT is a great tool to utilize, but as a regulatory setback distance from odor, it does have its limitations. And then the next part of this, and this is something that came about during former Commissioner Gillespie's meetings with some landowners and myself, language that would add a complaint process. And I think this is probably the win-win for the landowners of the county, because the complaint process would allow a more transparent process for the citizens to be involved if they have issues. Currently, they submit a complaint to our office, and as under investigation, there is no public comment. We don't release who complained. We just try to engage both sides of the party. But this would allow a forum that would allow mediation, so that landowners in the county don't have to secure legal counsel, that we would have a forum for those issues, discussions, complaints to be addressed in an open meeting, and hopefully the idea would be to come to some type of resolution with that. So that is the proposed change before you. Again, you referred this back to the Planning Commission for their review and comment. The only change that they made to your change or your draft ordinance was to remove the Class C setback. So in general, I would say, again, this is an administrative item. There is no real impact to CAFO operators with this proposed ordinance change, but overall, it would just provide some clarification, some black and white analysis for the citizens and for staff. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Toby. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the ordinance amendment? Hearing none and seeing nobody stepping up, anybody that would like to speak against the amendment of the ordinance? Come on up. Good morning, Cindy. Just state your name and address, please.
Can you hear me through my mask?
I can. If you want to take it off, if you're more comfortable, that's fine, too.
Okay. My name is Cindy Thomas. I live at 48131 Laurel Oak Lane in Canton, and thank you for your service to Lincoln County. I do not agree with the 1209F ordinance changes passed by Planning and Zoning in February. It changes the wording of the measuring distance from the outermost point of the feedlot to the nearest wall of a confinement. This changes setbacks to a lesser distance by moving where you measure to the edge of the confinement building instead of the edge of the five or 20 acres that the confinement sets on. This extra area can be used for other animals or manure storage and becomes another odor source. It also gets rid of the odor footprint tool, which may not be the best tool, but it is the only one that we have right now to protect citizens. The odor footprint tool is not just a prediction tool, as Planning and Zoning states. It was adopted in our ordinances, I believe, in 2018, and it was sold to this commission as a setback tool. And it works off formulas to calculate the actual total odor emission factor from the actual operation. If used correctly, it also calculates other odor sources from cumulative impact to determine the final setback to the 97% annoyance-free distance from the facility property to structures and homes. You can see that on page eight of the odor footprint tool. I believe this tool is not being properly used in Lincoln County and skews setbacks, especially when there are multiples facilities or other nearby odor animal sources or multiple farm sites. Does Planning and Zoning get to choose and pick which parts of the odor footprint tool are used? I don't see that anywhere in our ordinances. The odor footprint tool is helpful to preventing stacking and intensified odors, and I can remember when this commission stated not so long ago that SDSU should be hired to determine the correct use of the odor footprint tool for applications. SDSU should be used to obtain the site information, the specific site information. I don't believe this is being done. The last part of the amendment talks about placing the nuisance complaint process. I like this, but it does little when even the Planning and Zoning Director's own admission at the Planning and Zoning meeting said that Lincoln County has no way of measuring gases, odor, or noise. So my question is, how will we come to a resolution when there is no measurement obtained after there is a complaint, especially when the odor footprint tool is gone? Seems like kind of empty verbiage. Also, currently, there is a one-mile setback for municipalities. The odor footprint tool adds another layer of protection with the 99% odor annoyance-free distance. If you remove the odor footprint tool, stacking and not using the cumulative odor impact will not protect municipalities when the total odor emission factor establishes a further setback than one mile. I don't know if I'm able to show anything up on the screen. Is?
There we go.
Okay. It's probably not going to be big enough for you to see down here. This yellow line is that one-mile setback, or, excuse me, is the 99% annoyance-free setback, and you can see that it rapidly hits one mile and over, and that doesn't take more than a couple of Class Cs and a Class D, and you're over one mile already for municipalities. I ask you to vote no on these proposed changes, keeping what we have in place before further stripping the rights of property owners living near these facilities. Go back to the drawing board. Many good options have been presented in the last few years, and yet they've been voted down, tabled, or kicked down the road. But this amendment is the worst of the worst. Establishing a setback to a house instead of a property line infringes on the rest of your land that is used for human activities, such as hiking, hunting, four-wheeling, fishing, cross-country skiing, snowmobiling, gardening, and just the pure enjoyment of the land. Human activities on page 37 of the Comprehensive Plan protects those rights. What does Lincoln County have, I'm sorry, what right does Lincoln County have to not include someone's land in the setback? I am sure none of us purchased our land to sit in our house and just look at it, but this is what you are forcing us to do when you measure to our house instead of our property line. No one can plan outdoor activities because we never know when the smell from hell or the gases or pathogens will infect us. Please protect our land rights from others who choose to infringe on them in the name of ag.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board and speak against this amendment? Good morning, Tony.
Hello, Madam Chair. Anthony James Ventura, 47763, 292nd Street, Hudson, South Dakota, 57034. You have not addressed housing eligibility rights since you gave every landowner that owned 40 acres of housing eligibility in 1990s. Those rights will be negatively affected by the CAFO proposals, and they will not be safeguarded. We can't sell our eligibility elsewhere because our eligibility is frozen to our property. So if our sons and daughters and other family members want to move to our farm, you are not allowing your kids to return home to the farm because it is too big of a risk due to the intrusion of neighbors. Building operation that trespasses into our properties without obtaining a purchase easement, it puts a financial burden and health risk into landowners. Why are we continually catering to the 1% who have these operations and disregarding the 99% of landowners who have put up with the trespass zoning? It is not right that we have somebody build a home that can be intruded on. This intrusion includes noise, odor, dust, odor, and odor and pathogens. If an operator builds too close to adjoining properties, knowing that there's housing eligibility on those properties, the owner assumes at its own risk it will be in violation of that setback requirement. Should you build a home, should your home get built using housing eligibility given over 25 years ago? Comprehensive Plan says that Lincoln County is to protect all human activities. Is Lincoln County doing so? With the newly amended draft passed by Planning and Zoning, the answer is no. Since Lincoln County is not using testing facilities and adjoining properties for gases and odor and dust, how do you know that these items are not producing toxic effects to neighbors? How do you know what the health consequences are? Why can't we keep the CAFO owner purchase enough property to keep their own dangers on their own property? Why is it allowed to spill into somebody else's land? The animal counts of the concentrated confinement becomes too high for the landowners next door. Property owners in Lincoln County are forced to confront interference with their own land because CAFO owner is too cheap to purchase enough property or keep the danger in his own place. When the CAFO owner might like, the CAFO owner might like to smell or breathe, and an adjacent landowner may not. These gases travel long distances without filtration or treatment and end up flowing from the ground during high levels of humidity and rain in different topographies. This has never been considered in the Planning and Zoning or in Lincoln County Commission. If the electricity fails and the venting fails, all those pigs will be dead in seconds, but we have no protection against it from adjacent landowners, that is. If you consider the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, when Planning and Zoning Lincoln County Commission is allowing operation to impede into another landowner's property, you are creating a public zoning without compensation. This is illegal in Lincoln County. Lincoln County needs to get out of the land-taking business and let the landowners have the conversation instead of the county. The Planning and Zoning Board refers to residents as those people and you people. They have also said if you move into South Lincoln County, you should have to take whatever is done to you. What makes South Lincoln County residents different? Is it bad zoning to discourage commercial and industrial operations, building in the ag district? This is why we have no stores, no gas stations, no plumbing shops, et cetera. People are forced to drive to town to get what they need, and yet they can't get protection that the towns get for their own people. Is this Planning and Zoning Board unfairly discriminating and being biased at the hearing because some members have a conflict of interest? Also, during the hearing, some people were allowed to speak freely with no time constraints. At the last meeting, I was cut off at four minutes, forced me to get my point across quickly. The county commissioners sent a mailing to all CAFO producers, but nothing was sent to adjoining landowners or people that filed complaints who had voiced concerns or any... Is this an acceptable form of bias or discrimination? Complaints have been filed with Planning and Zoning for operations that have had issues. So far, there has never been no enforcement, no cleanup, no consequences for a producer, and no producer bought in for any reason. It's just another tale of how citizens are treated differently in South Lincoln County. If we are up north and somebody built a contractor shop and it produces too much traffic, the Planning and Zoning Board will force them to drive in a different direction, add trees, fencing, anything for safety protection. But if you live down south, you get nothing. Nothing is a word. What a shame. Properties, small animal counts and agriculture-based farming, please vote down the amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against the application or the amendment? Excuse me. Good morning, sir. Will you state your name and address?
Ernest Strothmeyer, 28503 474 Avenue, Worthing. Please vote down this Planning and Zoning Amendment. It's not, for all the reasons that have just been stated, it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Don Abus, 28070... 472nd Avenue, Worthing.
Good morning.
Good morning. And Mike Poppins had the original thing here, that how the county was growing, and it's growing to the south, and it's going to get down south, you know, in a short time. And I was supporting Cindy on her, she had losing the odor footprint. And that is a big item on it, and... And the other one is, number one, we lost the setback of churches, schools, and businesses. You know, churches and schools and businesses should be a mile setback as the original, as the original Blue Ribbon Committee appointed by the commissioners some years back. Yes, I'm supporting all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I'm going to pull my mask down if I may, Madam Chair.
You bet.
Dave Gillespie, 1125 East Elder Street, Canton, South Dakota, formerly rural Canton. I concur with all these people that have spoke. I think we're, you know, we started the ad hoc committee, and Don served on it, and many, a lot of these people did serve on it, Ernie. And it seems like we have went, you know, trying to improve this or make it better for people out in the country. And this situation, and I want to thank Toby for working on all this and helping with the ad hoc, too. But we tried property line to property line, that failed. Now this odor footprint, that has, you know, I really think probably we need to just back up and just use what we had. We're probably better off because we're losing ground with this change. So my thought would be to vote this down and then look at it maybe down the road. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, Toby, will you come back up for a second, please? Toby, the odor footprint, and is SDSU no longer maintaining that or servicing it? What's going on with it?
It's changed. When we first started utilizing it, the applicants went directly to staff at SDSU, and they were completed, and they would send us the reports. They've had some staff turnover there. So lately, it's been the applicant submits the, what I'll call the materials to our office, then we utilize SDSU staff to review it. The problem is, as Cindy Thomas pointed out, there is a lot of gray area to the analysis. And so a lot of times SDSU staff will be back to us to say, well, how do we utilize, which way do you want to utilize it? So it does create a lot of issues for staff administering it. So for instance, last year's applications, we had two Class As that were totally confined cattle barns. The odor footprint doesn't have a classification for those types of operations. And so through SDSU's assistance, it was manipulated to meet what they felt was a threshold that we could utilize. We were totally transparent with that during the process, but it does create a lot of issues for staff to have to assist the applicants and assist you with making those decisions. And so, again, for those reasons, there is some limitations to the odor footprint analysis.
So, I mean, you think the fix is just to get rid of it wholesale, or is there something else that would work?
Yeah, I think staff will continue to utilize it as an advisory tool, as part of the application process, as we did before it was adopted as a standard. The challenge is, though, is that, again, how we're utilizing it now is as a standard for a basis of a foot analysis for the odor threshold. And so there's challenges. For instance, if you read, if you look at what's on the screen now is, we did start utilizing it, as Cindy pointed out, the two Class A operations that we had last year, we included the existing operations that were there. But if you read the ordinance by the letter of the law, it doesn't say that we should have done that. But we did, we're totally transparent that we did that. But again, the other part of that is that the public had the benefit of seeing the original applications that were submitted with the application. And so when the citizens were reviewing those applications, they did identify discrepancies, but so did staff. Those discrepancies were corrected prior to the applications being forwarded to the Planning Commission for review. So as being transparent, it's really difficult to get all of this under one package that everyone can see and review and understand completely with it. It's much easier from a staff perspective, and I would think from an approval perspective, that the rules and regulations that we have in the county are black and white, so that everyone doesn't have to have an Excel spreadsheet, they don't have to have an expertise in that. What our standard is, is a setback. Good or bad, too far, too, not too far, that is a standard that's very black and white that we can present, that the public can understand and go for. The second part that I didn't say today, too, is that in the years that we've been doing this, even utilizing the most conservative approach to the South Dakota odor footprint tool with SDSU's assistance, not once has it required an increase in the setback, which to me validates the setbacks that we have, the standard general setbacks we have, that establishes that that does lead us to potential for odor annoyance levels that are less than what potentially we would have otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other quick question. Mr. Strattmeyer had said that churches, schools, and businesses, that the setback was removed. I guess I don't see that, but...
Yeah, that was changed a year, two ago.
Okay, not in this one.
Not in this draft, no. No changes to setbacks are in this draft.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I'm not opposed at all at having this tool. What I get concerned about is if it, down the road, is not available from SDSU or Minnesota. You know, if it's part of our requirements, it would become an impossible avenue for someone to obtain. What would we do at that point?
I would come back before you and say that we can't complete this.
Would it be a variance, then, from that statute, or what would be the action at that point, do you think?
The action, we'd have to deny the application.
We'd have to completely deny it? Okay.
And again, the part of this, it's, I agree with everyone that it is the best tool that we have. Where the level becomes, though, a rule, a law, an ordinance, that's the question that this board needs to answer. We're perfectly fine. We can utilize the tool, we've been utilizing the tool. There are issues that we didn't anticipate when we first recommended adoption of this, and that was really felt last year with those two applications where I felt we were fudging, but in a conservative way with the guidance of staff from SDSU. But there were parts that it just, it's not black and white, and that creates so much gray area that it does create, I think, problems now and in the future with how we utilize the tool.
Okay. Mr. Ventura, you wanted to say something?
I just have one order to correct one thing you said. On page five or six of the SDSU odor footprint plan, it states that you must address all odor sources adjoining the application. So it is in there, he's just not following those guidelines written from on page six.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions, thoughts, comments on the board? All right, well, with that, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve or dis- unapprove the amending of the text of Article 12.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to table the proposed amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
I want to thank everyone for being here today who spoke on the topic, Cindy, Tony, Don, Dave. I agree with your sentiment that we, the amendment is not ready for prime time. It's not ready for implementation. I disagree with the reasons, though, and I've previously spoken with all of you at length about my view on CAFOs in Lincoln County. I'll just shortly restate it because I know we've got an audience here. We've got, we're a rural farming county that has a very large population base in the northern part of the county who is growing south. We've got to learn to get along. I think we do get along. But we, as I said earlier, Lincoln County has some challenges, very unique to it, that maybe other counties don't have. We have a growing population base. Most counties have a negative population base, meaning they're losing citizens. We're gaining citizens. People and cattle, generally speaking, cattle and animal operations usually are not, or the growth of people and animal operations usually are not consistent with each other, meaning that sometimes it works better to build CAFOs where there's not as many people living there. But at the same time, people who own land here and raise cattle and raise crops have certain rights. And one of those rights is to be able to do what they want with their land consistent with zoning regulations. And those are very powerful rights that people have. Landowners' rights should not be dismissed. And also, people who don't want to grow or raise livestock also have powerful rights as well with regard to having their property or their livelihood disturbed by potential CAFOs. And so Lincoln County is going to continue to struggle with this problem. Just a little bit of history, myself and Commissioner Schmidt, a couple months ago, sat down with Toby at Planning and Zoning. And then, he was not a commissioner, private citizen at that point. Commissioner Gibbon also sat down with us, and Tony Ventura sat down with us as well. And we had tried to work out a compromise piece of legislation regarding setbacks and regarding the odor footprint tool and some of those things. And what you see before you here today is a, what I would call a severely revised and mangled compromise that probably doesn't reflect what our intent was a couple months ago when we sat down. I did listen with great interest to the Planning and Zoning hearing that was referenced by some of the speakers here today. And I think Commissioner Gibbon was there as well. Listened to it closely, I listened to Commissioner Poppins' questions and comments there, as well as the other members of Planning and Zoning. So heard what they had to say. And just as a very quick recap for people, what happened at Planning and Zoning is there were a number of opponents and proponents who were there. And I got to tell you, after I listened to that meeting, I actually walked away and I said, well, that piece of compromise legislation there is probably not going to go anywhere. Because there were some producers who were supportive of this, and I'll let them speak for themselves, I know they're not here today. And then there were some producers who were not supportive of this. And the whole point of what we were trying to do over the last few months was trying to get some more compromise and consensus in the county. And I understand it's, there's some issues where compromise is easy, and there's other issues where consensus and compromise is going to be very difficult, including with regard to CAFOs. And I've been very supportive of people building their CAFOs in the past in recognition of the fact that Lincoln County is still, at least a great part of the southern end of the county, is very, almost exclusively agriculturally oriented. And we need to remember that because that's where our roots are. And frankly, when we're talking about economic development in South Dakota, that's where economic development in the future is going to occur. Maybe not necessarily with a CAFO, but one of our strengths in South Dakota is agriculture. And I think, this is just my own personal opinion, but I do think there's plenty to back it up out there, is that is where growth in agribusiness is a bright spot in South Dakota. You know, there's going to be other opportunities, cattle processing plants, swine processing, swine CAFO, all those types of things are on the horizon because we've got a lot of grain production in this county, immense amount of grain production. That grain production can be used to not only raise cattle, but also in terms of processing plants and things like that in the future. And we can do that responsibly. I know we can get through it. It's like Commissioner Gillespie said to me, if we can put a man on the moon, we could certainly figure this out. And I think we can. But I'm going to vote to table this today. If I could, procedurally speaking, I would vote to kill this so that it doesn't come back up again. But I think just from a procedural standpoint, all I can do is vote to table this, and that's where I stand. Appreciate it. Appreciate the comments of everyone, too, today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I would yield to Commissioner Gibbon first, if he would like.
I remember sitting in this room last September already when this issue came up and the revision and possible change that it might have. And I know that the word compromise is something that has to be considered. I also know that there has to be balance in this county. There are places for CAFOs, and there are places probably not for CAFOs. There is success with CAFOs when there's communication, when there's communication between neighbors and neighborhoods and finding the appropriate spots, and so on and so forth. As a person that is involved in agriculture and livestock production, I know where these people are coming from. And I guess at the same time, my previous career, I also understand that I had staff that lived in the country and wanted to live in the country, and valued that experience, and obviously want to have clean air to smell and roads that aren't torn, tore up due to some of the things that are involved with CAFOs. So I guess perhaps maybe at this particular time, this might be the best move at looking at what has been in place and what is being proposed now. So I guess, right now, I guess that's why I support the table amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Poppins?
Again, thank everyone for coming today and speaking. A lot of good points, and I have no objection to tabling this. I would like to have some kind of concept as to if it's tabled indefinitely or if it's a, let's review this in two weeks. Personally, I think a lot of things have been brought up, and I don't know that we can fix this mechanism here today without going back to the drawing board. So in almost all effectiveness, I would actually support terminating this language and starting over. So for that reason, I would actually not support tabling it, and rather to vote to deny this at this point and send it back. The one caveat I will say is, the odor footprint mechanism looks to be a tool only because it does not sound like it's a long-term reliability by getting it from SDSU. So I definitely think that might have to have a lot of scrutiny, and I know that may be controversial, but when speaking with staff, it does not look like to be a viable tool in the future, and we may have to find some other mechanism. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I will, based off Commissioner Poppins' comments, I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll make a motion to, I don't know what the exact language is going to be here, but I guess I would make a motion to deny or turn down the amendment.
If you'll indulge me, if the motion was to approve and then you voted no, I think that maybe is the way, but I'm not telling you how to make your motion, but...
I know, you know, Robert's Rules of Order likes people to voice everything in the affirmative. I think you're probably right. It's just I'm not going to make a, I'm not going to make a motion to approve this because conceptually, I don't want it approved.
I understand.
And I know I'll vote no.
So maybe the mechanism, excuse me, could we just process through the table action, and if it, when it fails, then take the alternative motion?
Yeah.
So what are we doing?
Vote on the tabling.
Vote on the tabling.
Vote on the tabling. All right, we're going to vote on the tabling. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronson?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Landin?
No.
No.
There we go.
There you go.
There we have a clean slate.
So, I guess at this time, what I'll make a motion to do then is... I just moved to not accept the amendment and to postpone it indefinitely? Well, even postponing indefinitely doesn't get us where we need to be, because, and here's my concern, I want another public hearing for this. If we postpone or table, which we're no longer going to do, I think statutorily, then there's no requirement for future public hearings on it. Any successive commission could bring it back up. So, I guess I'm going to vote to terminate or deny the amendment, if that makes sense.
It does to me.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I do just want to respond to something Commissioner Poppins said. I think the facts are probably undeniable regarding what Commissioner Poppins said with regard to the South Dakota odor footprint tool as a regulatory device. Based upon what I've heard from Toby, is that the odor footprint tool has never actually served to stop any kind of CAFO or development from occurring. So, it does raise the issue of what is the utility of the tool? I'm not ready to get rid of it today, though, even though that's what the proposed bill would call for. But I think we've got more work to do. So, thank you.
Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
No.
Move on to item five. Sherri, talk about the holiday coming up.
The state has authorized administrative leave for the Easter holiday from April 2nd to April 5th. And I just wanted to see what the county's position was on that.
You know, when I talked to you about this, you had talked to the department heads, and it sounded like the consensus was that...
Just taking the Friday off.
Take Friday, and then they would work on Monday?
Yep.
And that was no problem with any of the department heads?
Correct.
Okay. Thoughts of commission?
We don't have this in our vacation handbook currently?
We do not. Nope, we took it out where we followed the state automatically.
And we took it out. I think normally what, it's noon on Friday, but I don't think it's a super productive day, and most people probably take it off anyway, but...
There's been some years we have worked till noon on Friday, correct?
Yes. Yep, there has been.
I'm fine with the Friday, taking Friday off and then working on Monday, especially if the department heads are agreeing to that.
There is mail on Monday, correct?
As far as I know, yeah.
I believe so.
It, it's just a state holiday, not a federal holiday on Monday. I, I support it. Got no problem everybody having Friday off. It seems to be what the mainstream of the local society does, and the state is doing it. My comment would be in the future, now with regard to just Easter. And the commission is free to do whatever it wants. But I think we should just, at the beginning of every year, bring the holiday calendar up to the commission, have a discussion about it. So that way, our employees and our workforce and our, can know ahead of time with, with their families what they're going to do. Because maybe a lot of people would say, "Well, if I had known a couple of months ago we were going to have Good Friday off, we would have traveled to grandma's house 500 miles away from here," or whatever. So I would just support more long-term planning in the future regarding the holidays. And I think that provides stability to the staff and to the county workforce.
Thank you.
Yep, we can add that to our list of things we do at the first meeting.
List of things to do.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, with that, I would consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to take Good Friday off, but leave on the calendar working for Easter Monday.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Item six, appoint an appraisal committee for a surplus 2015 Dodge Charger, and authorize the auditor to publish notice to receive sealed bids.
Yes, I need three individuals to appraise that vehicle before we can sell it.
Where's it at?
I'm not sure right now, but I'm guessing, most of the surplus vehicles get placed on that lot just south here, about a block or two.
Any volunteers?
I'll volunteer.
Anybody else?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion that we appoint the appraisal committee, Commissioner Ehrens, Commissioner Poppins, and surplus the 2015 Dodge Charger, authorize auditor to publish notice to receive sealed bids.
I do need three landowners.
I can do it.
Landy, thank you.
That's your motion, Joel?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Item seven, City of Lenox contract for dispatching services. Sherri, good morning.
Good morning. Just making a request to authorize the chair to sign the contract between the Lincoln County and the City of Lenox for police dispatch services.
Is this new?
Yes, this would be the final one of the cities with police departments in Lincoln County.
All right. Consider a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Second item I have is to give permission to sign a contract with Axon Enterprises for five additional tasers for the deputies. It's over a five-year period, it's $12,210.40. Oddly, it's cheaper to do the lease purchase, we get a better warranty and a, and a better price. That's why we choose to go this route.
Then, do you own them at the end, or...
Correct. They have a five-year lifespan. So...
All right, any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, I had a request on item nine to table, item nine, for Commissioner Schmidt to be here, and then, I think there, it's still in draft, so I think it'd be premature to talk about that at this point. So I'd like a motion to table it, if everybody can agree to that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, and I'd like to make a few comments, too. So I'll move to table.
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I think the way that this made it onto the agenda was probably a little haphazard, wasn't supposed to be on the agenda in the first place. I think the miscommunication was that Mr. Garnos had sent his invoice for review or something like that. And I don't remember the whole email chain here. But the report is in draft format. Mr. Garnos has finished almost all of his work. Many Haha County who participated in this has a number of thoughts, or I don't want to say concerns, but they have a number of things that they want Mr. Garnos to take into consideration, that were not readily apparent to him when he was drafting the report. And so, it, those issues may affect the material conclusions that Mr. Garnos made. And so, the draft is not ready for review yet, because material terms of it may change based upon what Many Haha County's input is from their sheriff's department. So, at this time, I would just ask everyone to support tabling it, because it's just not done yet.
Thank you. Sean, will you go ahead and call? Oh, excuse me.
May I have a question?
Sure.
Commissioner Ehrens, did Many Haha County share with you at all what some of those items, it doesn't have to be reported, I'm just curious what some of the things might be that they need to review yet?
They did, and I'm willing to share those with you confidentially.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Item 10, Appointment of the Register of Deeds.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Two items for you this morning. The first is to approve the appointment of Becky Vanderbrook as a Lincoln County Register of Deeds, and an annual compensation of $65,000 effective the 5th of April.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? How many applicants did we have, Julia?
The top of my head, five.
Okay. And the candidate that we're talking about today, that she had the best qualifications out of those, and we interviewed her.
Would this need to be an executive session, under personnel performance? Okay. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Interviews were conducted by two commissioners, I guess, involved. And this is the direction, it was my understanding, we would like to go, the county that is.
Thank you. Well, I'll go ahead and turn the gavel over, and I'll go ahead and second the motion.
There's been a second. We have a motion pending to approve Becky Vanderbrook as the Lincoln County Register of Deeds, an annual compensation of $65,000 effective April 5th, 2021. And there is a second. Is there any discussion?
How, how did we arrive at the figure for salary?
That was the initial figure that we hired the treasurer and auditor at when they first came on. And then that did get changed after that upward to meet market. But 65 is where we've started the other two. That's my recollection.
Yes. And market's significantly higher right now, so I think the thought process is to get them in the role, get their feet under them, and then reevaluate when market in a couple months for next year.
And our current register of deeds is done April 2nd?
Yep, that Friday.
So, so it'll be reviewed in December?
Correct.
I don't have any opposition of Becky Vanderbrook. I don't know her, I've never met her, but what I've got some concern about is just the process here. And, you know, maybe that's something that could be remedied in an executive session. But my, my inclination right now is to not agree to this. I guess the first I learned of this is when it was published on the agenda the other day. So, for that reason, just for lack of communication, maybe it could just be remedied through some more discussion. That's why I'm opposed to it today.
You call on the question?
Would you like to go into executive session?
The question's been called.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so, Sean, call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ehrens?
No. The question passes. Debbie Becky Vanderbrook, excuse me, is the new appointed Lincoln County Register of Deeds.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
And next is to approve the resignation of Paul Kopeck, effective April 1st.
I'll go ahead and take the chair back.
Pass them back.
Thank you. Consider a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a request for a payment plan. Debbie? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here today to request a payment plan for a homeowner who has taxes owing from 2017 through current year. This person actually has just found out that his taxes are this far behind, because the home is actually owned by his mother, who is deceased. He would like to put $1,500 down and make approximately $429 payments through November, where we're thinking we should be able to have it all cleared up through November of this year.
And you're supportive of the request?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for Debbie?
This isn't related to the issue that we had at the la, is it the last meeting with regard to somebody who is requesting?
No, this is a, this is a...
This is entirely separate.
Whole, whole different person.
Okay. Thank you.
I've heard the request, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Poppins, you're going to tee up airport review appraisal?
I think, hopefully I can keep this brief, we had an appraisal done by Shackett for the airport property that was purchased sometime back. In discussions with Hels, it was determined that there has to be a review of that appraisal done. Had contacted a couple of individuals. One was a Ms. Nelson that is available. Sean, refresh my memory, what would the amount was? I was trying to pull that back up again to do so.
I would have to pull it up, hold up here.
Yeah, thank you. Basically, it's just a part of the procedures that's required to get the reimbursement for the funds that were dispersed to purchase the land. I have 2,300 or 2,500 for some reason.
I've got maximum cost was 2863.
There it is. Perfect. That's the amount. And she is available to do it and could expedite the process, but we would need to authorize the contract and the signing of that contract, so...
And this is a requirement, correct?
Requirement, if we want the money back.
All right.
And it, it doesn't appear we have the contract. This is the scope of work that gets approved.
I had forwarded that to you, I will verify.
That is what you forwarded, was the scope of work.
Just the scope.
Yeah.
I'll get that contract.
Okay.
I'll have to bring the contract for our next agenda, thank you. So this would approve it, and then the signing would be next week, so, of the contract.
So I would ask for a motion to approve the review appraisal scope of work. So I would ask for a motion to approve the review appraisal scope of work from Nelson Valuation Services, not to exceed $2,863.
I would move to do so.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Item 14, remove application for drainage feasibility study grant and move forward with the sale of land near T. Commissioner Poppins, were you going to address that?
Yeah, I sure briefly, just after speaking with staff in the GIS and Toby's office, it seems like our action is in conflict of the application for that funding. So one of two things, we would rescind one of two actions, either the application for the funding for the grant and move forward with the sale of all of the property, or consider rescinding the surplus classification, at least until the grant has been acted upon.
Thank you. I know my initial thought would be to remove it from surplus. I, this is only my third year, but every year, people come and talk to us when we sit as the Drainage Board about flooding along Nine Mile Creek. And I know the purchase of this property would enable us to work on a drainage plan for that area and improve some of those problems for the folks that live along the, along Nine Mile Creek. So I would, I'd like to see us remove that from surplus and continue with our drainage feasibility study grant. Commissioner Gibbon, any comment?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Ehrens?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. So with that, I'd consider a motion.
Well, as it was my topic, I'll move to remove our grant application and move forward with the sale of the property as a whole.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just want to go on the record, as I would be disappointed with this action because it has been a long-term plan to try to conflict the issues of Nine Mile Creek. And it's a tragedy that we're going to forego that opportunity, so...
I agree. But Sean, will you go ahead and call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
No.
Consider a motion to adjourn, unless we don't need executive session for anything. Okay?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned?